To the Republic, which stands one nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, turn off my phone, please. Minutes of June 12th meeting, do we have any corrections?
I make the motion to accept it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are accepted. First order of business now is going to be an appeal for a lot line adjustment. And that's at, Mr. Watson's handle that, give us a little explanation, what we're looking at here.
We deem the application as complete on last month's meeting, so this is a public hearing.
Hey, I'll tell ya, huh? You better hope they're not all against you, otherwise you're in trouble. Forget that lot line change.
Glennon Watson from Badian Watson. It's an application of Martin McHugh and his siblings for a lot line adjustment. That's before the planning board, we're not eligible because we're seeking to reduce the frontage on one of the two lots. Essentially, the family together inherited a large piece of property, about sixty-seven acres, adjacent to another piece that one of the siblings owns individually, Mary McHugh and her husband. They want to, Mary wants to increase the size of her property and take her value out of this inheritance with that, by adjusting her lot to make it about eight acres bigger. The problem that we face is that if you look at the maps that we gave you last month in this particular one, the frontage on this large lot is already deficient. It's a hundred and fifty-seven feet, and a hundred and seventy-five feet, but it's in two places. Most of the property, about a hundred and sixty feet, has frontage along Lake Surprise Road, down in the lower part of the road, the first point at which you get to the property from Fishgo Road. And there's about twenty-two hundred feet of other private property that has nothing to do with the McHugh family. And then they have twenty-two feet of road frontage before Mary McHugh's property starts. So where's, in order to achieve this lot line adjustment would make some sense, we have two choices. We could do what we propose here, which is annex this twenty-two feet onto Mary McHugh's property and seek the variance to reduce our frontage even further to a hundred and fifty-seven feet, I believe. Our alternate is to create a skinny flag pole of land to get to this frontage. The frontage has no, has no practical value, as we said in the application. It, very steep drop at that point, it drops thirty-four feet within the first hundred, thirty-six feet within the first hundred feet, so it's a thirty-six percent drop. It just doesn't make any sense to do that. So, we are seeking relief on that, on that point, so we get additional variance. It's quite a large variance, it's a ninety-two percent variance, I believe, when you add it all up from the original requirement of two-hundred-and-fifty feet. It's, has no environmental consequence that we can see, nobody's going to build because of it, nobody's going to not build because of it, it's not going to affect the neighbors. It will just, it just makes more sense than to have a flagpole of useless land attached to this thing, simply to make the, the frontage requirement work. It's, I guess it's arguable that itself, whether or not it's self-created, we're asking for it, so in that sense, it's self-created. But we're, we're in a situation where we had a piece of property that came into being when the only requirement was for twenty feet of frontage, and it's, it's just, there's lots of little changes that occurred in the zoning law when it was adopted in 2011, this is one of them. So, we don't believe we have, just to reiterate, we don't believe we have any environmental consequences. The variance that we're actually granting twenty-two feet is not terribly big if you look at it from its absolute value, doesn't have any effect on the neighbors, and it avoids making really an irregular and useless strip of land that will be an append, a useless appendage to the larger piece of property. With that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions if you might have them.
Now, since it's a public hearing, is anybody here wish to speak on this issue? On, on this lot line adjustment? I'm sorry, yes, yes. Can we go up here, turn them up, please, and to the microphone?
Sure.
Introduce yourself.
Yes, I'm Susan Freeman, I'm the neighbor.
Okay, where you live, what's your address?
A fifty-six Lake Surprise Road.
Fifty-six Lake Surprise.
We can show you here. My driveway.
What's your, what's your question?
Yeah, here, I have an easement that's very close, that would come into that hundred-and-fifty-seven feet, yes?
That's correct.
Yeah. And, so, and I, you know, only recently found out about this, and I just, I'm a little bit, you know, in the dark, and I would like to have some time and some advice on it, because it will be right smack next to my driveway.
The question.
The point is that we want to take this little bit of frontage that's part of this overall property up by where the gorge is, where it goes, drops down right opposite Deer Hollow Road?
Mm-hmm.
And we want to take that little tiny bit of frontage right there, put it on this piece of property that Mary owns.
Yeah, Mary's there.
And, and not have any effect on this, it'll just be what it is, it's not going to change.
Oh, you're never going to put a driveway there?
I didn't say that, I said it's not going to change the frontage.
Ah, all right.
It's not my property, what they're going to do with their property is their own business.
All right, well, I would just like to look into it a little further, that's all.
Were you notified by mail?
Yes.
Okay.
I was.
What's your concern?
My concern is that there will be, since this is a very, there's a curve here, it's quite a dangerous way of coming out. If the driveway is put into this big parcel that's for sale, it will have to be right smack next to my driveway. I have an easement onto that, I don't know what the thought about my easement is going to be, but I'm concerned that there'll be two driveways right next to each other in quite an awkward spot on the road, it could be dangerous.
I'm sorry?
That would still be there whether it was approved or not.
Excuse me?
Either way, it would still be there, because you can't put a driveway in that corner, because of the drop. So if they wanted to put a driveway there without getting the easement, they still could.
Uh-huh, well, that's what I'm questioning.
He still could put a driveway in no matter what.
Yeah, no matter what, okay.
And there's, there's no way to make this an alternate driveway, it's, it's drops.
No, I, yeah, I see, I mean, I understand what the dilemma is, but I still would like to look into it further.
We've had the meeting last month where we looked at it and everything was explained to us.
Oh, I didn't get a notice about that.
We only sent public hearing notices, right, so, so, when did you get a notice?
On June twenty-first.
June twenty-first, okay, fine. Well, to try and explain to you, you know, I understand what you're trying to say, but he could put a driveway there anyway, right?
Excuse me?
You're saying you worried about a driveway going there?
Yes.
But there could be a driveway going there no matter what, correct? If they, if we granted this or not, there still could be a driveway there, I guess is my question.
I guess, isn't the question that there's not enough frontage, it's a hundred-and-fifty-seven?
Well, because they're trying to break up the lot differently, so, I guess there's different people involved that want to sell, and different family members and all like that, so, I don't really, don't believe that, you know, they can't put a driveway there because of the drop, so, it's going to have to go there one way or the other, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
This, the driveway cannot be put up here, two thousand and four feet away, because it drops so steeply down to the.
Yeah, I know, I know where that spot is.
This hundred-and-fifty-seven feet is the only practical way into that property, and that's not going to change, it's not going to get shorter, it's not, it's not going to be graded, it's, this does not precipitate anything with that.
Yes.
I, I think the point is that even if there was no variance, the concern that you have would be raised either with a variance or without a variance, your concern is, would my easement be affected on that small segment, on that small segment of the property, but that's something that would be an issue with or without the grant of the variance, they're simply reducing the road frontage on a completely different part of the property, where I understand your easement isn't located, so.
My, I don't know, you'd have to be there to see, but my driveway comes out here, and the little spot where you go into your, the property is pretty, pretty close to my driveway.
Understood, I mean, I can't give you legal advice, my only point is, with or without the, the variance, I, I can't give you an opinion as to what your rights are on that particular part, I haven't looked at an easement, that's not a part of the application.
That's probably what I'm.
I'm just saying it would be unaffected whether you had a right or didn't have a right by what this board would do on a variance on an entirely different part of the parcel, is that correct, Lynn?
But, yeah, but are you saying that I, my desire to have someone else look at this and, and talk to me about it is a problem?
It's not a problem for, for me, the question is, is the board willing to put it over just so, for the sake of putting it over?
That's what I'm requesting.
I don't see any reason to put it over, because you're going to got to put a driveway there one way or the other, I understand your concern.
That section isn't even being touched.
Right. So, as far as putting it over, I, I don't see.
What do you mean that section's not being touched, isn't this where the driveway's going to be?
No, that's not, that's not a subject of this, of this variance. We won't put a driveway over here, we can't put a driveway over here. If this property, if that variance is not granted, and somebody wants to build a driveway in here, they would still have to use this, that same hundred-and-fifty-seven feet, that's not going to change.
The subject of the variance is that green box, basically.
Right.
Well, I'm just requesting that I be able to speak with someone further, that's up to you. Of course, decided.
Well, no, we're not going to hold it up, this, this is, this is the second month, you know, I'm trying to, so we had one month, we had that, to the second month, I'm not going to, next month we don't meet, so it means I will be holding much of September, so I'm not going to do that.
Well, I didn't know about the other meeting.
Well, you wouldn't be notified of the other meeting, that's on the town, but it is on the town website and stuff and all like that, you know, so people, I know it's something people don't check all the time, but it is there, but, all I'm trying to say is that, in my opinion, that it's not something to be held up. There's no reason, I understand your concern, but driveway, they're not saying they're going to put a driveway there, but if they did.
But it, yes, I see that, but, yes, if this parcel is sold, that's the only way they, the only place they can have access to it.
They can enter the property, correct. I don't think you're looking to land lock the property, are you? For you, you don't want, you would want somebody to be able to use that, wouldn't you?
Do you?
Use the property?
Would I want that, I mean, that's, I can't say that, I mean, I'm not going to object to that, of course.
Well, that was the only way they could use it.
Uh-huh, well, that may be so, but I still don't, I still request to speak to somebody about it.
Okay, and I deny the request.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd want to hear this, speak on this? All right, let's just go over the five fact. I'm sorry, one other person, yes. Go ahead, want to step up, please, tell me who you are, and give her the mic, please. Oh, okay, next one, we'll start with you, I suppose.
Hi, my name is Christine Zachalak, I live on thirty-four Folless Drive. Like boom, Zachalak-a-boom-boom.
That's right.
With my husband, John Pearlman.
Zachalak, you could guess that one.
Z as in zebra, A-K-A-L-A-K, Christine. We live on the opposite side of this proposed property subdivision, and my concern is, I wanted to thank Greg for posting a hundred-and-forty-eight pages on PhillipsTown.com of all the information on this, however, it was very, very difficult to read, especially on some of the overlay maps, and one of the things that I'm very concerned about, Mr. Watson, you had mentioned the incredible steepness, and doesn't that fall under the steep slope laws, as far as even driveways?
No, it's not putting a driveway there.
But he may.
I think, they said they can't put it there because it's too steep.
Okay, and the other thing that I could not see, there were certain things that were checked on the forms, but there was no legend to see what was there. For instance, like endangered species were listed, were not listed, but it was checked that there were endangered species there, and also, this is open space conservation overlay district, the Foundry Brook watershed, so what does that mean to the subdivision? I mean, I understand that you're just moving this lot line, however, it does repeat the term subdivision many times.
If he, if he has granted the, the variance, he still has to go back to the planning board, am I correct?
Yes, this, this.
This is not finished.
This is, this is technically a subdivision. It is a subdivision because it involves moving a lot line to change the smaller lot more than ten percent of its area. It's, doesn't, there's nothing physically proposed, being proposed, all we're proposing to do is move the lot line to make Mary McHugh's lot line bigger, and take off, and give her that little twenty feet of frontage that is otherwise useless.
And will this set a precedent for all the other rural residential areas where it's required to have a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot frontage, and now that someone has granted a much smaller frontage, does that mean that anybody who's got fifty feet or thirty feet can just build on flat properties?
No, each application is taken by itself, okay? Someone may, may be approved, someone may disapprove, depends on all the variations of what the information is giving, we go over the five factors, is what's involved, there's five questions that are involved here, and we look at, we look at the entirety. Now, does that mean the guy down the street, if he had the same situation, would he get the variance, let's say, then he may not. So, one, there's no cookie cutter.
Okay, so it's not going to set a precedence, and this is, this is no foreseeing of things to come, that there might be a possibility of fifteen homes being built in that area, which I think is the amount.
I, I don't know, I have no idea how many homes can be built on that area, that, that part I wouldn't know.
Well, rural residential, according to, I think, I think it was 2011, was five acres, but I heard that it might be increased to fifteen acres, is it still five?
It is already fifteen acres.
It is already fifteen.
Right.
That is the overlay district, it might be five acres as its basic zoning.
Okay.
Because it's in the overlay district, lots in the overlay district, or venture subdivision, or an open area development subdivision, which is kind of subdivision that you live in, is fifteen acres minimum lots on us.
Okay.
It's been that way since 2011.
Okay, thank you.
The matter of, question of precedent in terms of, of this, the explanation, the answers to your question go directly to that, in that, we have a unique situation in that our frontage is split, a hundred-and-fifty-seven feet, one end, and then, I'm sorry, I could get a little.
I'm sure, I'm sure they miss it, too. And, and twenty-two hundred feet away, there's twenty-two feet of frontage that virtually goes over a cliff, that we're trying to attach to the next lot.
I just want, anybody else? Okay, I just want to go to five factors quickly on this, all right? Question A is, what is a possible detriment would the variance have on nearby properties?
Well, again, there's a direct answer in the, in the, in the application, but essentially.
No, no detriment.
There's no detriment, because there's, it doesn't precipitate, it doesn't, any kind of construction, it doesn't make any kind of construction or even possible.
Okay. What impacts would the variance have on a character of neighborhood? Well, same thing, I don't see.
Same, nothing, nothing changes, you're not going to see it, it's not going to be painted on the ground, there's not going to be fence put up.
Right, if you didn't get the variance, how else could you build, and what would you want, how would you accomplish your goal?
Well, what we could do, as I explained to the board during my presentation, is we could create a slender.
Flag lot.
Flag lot, to capture this frontage and keep it in, as part of the lot. We don't see that it does any, any real good, or any, there's any point to it.
Okay, what is the code requirement you seek to vary, that's the road frontage?
The road frontage, yes.
Okay. Are there any questions from any members of the board?
Just, looking at this, how come they didn't take the addition to the, to that lot from the top and completely avoid this?
They used, the, the, the problem is that they used an old ancient deed to, to create that parcel for Mary, the sister that owns the, the parcel up on the top, and it ran to the middle of the road, and when you reconstruct, when you construct land with a road line, a sideline to the road, the geometry changes, the rules to do that change, and created this little, it just created this little extra frontage that didn't get conveyed to Mary, I think that's what they originally intended, it's not what they accomplished.
No, I think you misunderstood, the green box that's on the map here, how come, why didn't they just grab that whole green box and go to the top of the property, and completely move that box to the top?
I think that was a matter of, I, I believe, and that that was a matter of what the four siblings who were involved, owned the property, felt was equitable solution.
Questions, any board members? At this time, make a motion that the public hearing be closed?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to call for a vote on the issue of variance, now you still have to go back to the planning board, right?
I do.
Okay. Issue a variance for the front lot line adjustment, it would be either in favor or against, Mr. Stone?
I will vote to approve.
Okay, Mr. Lynn?
I'll vote to approve.
I approve.
And I vote to approve as well.
I approve, that's anonymous vote, thank you. The attorney will make up the resolution. Okay, thank you. All right, next order of business is, I guess what everybody's here for, is the cell tower at twenty-seven hundred, Route nine, okay. Now, Mr. Attorney that usually we deal with is not here tonight, so I'm going to, you're Mr. Kenny, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Good evening, Board, Mr. Godioso apologizes for not being here, he had a scheduling conflict. Real scheduling conflict. So, tonight, Board, we're actually here, we have some comments that we received from the board at the last meeting that the applicant is still taking.
Well, I'm going to go, it's not comments, okay, what it was, was we reviewed, you weren't here, I don't think, were you here?
No, I was not here.
We reviewed the application, we found some mistakes that had to be corrected, okay? So, I want to do, was want to go over those mistakes and see if you've corrected them.
I believe what we're asking the board is to schedule a public hearing, a joint public hearing with the conservation board for September, and.
No, we're not ready for that, we're nowhere near that.
Well, the comments that we can, we don't have them for you tonight, but I, I can go over briefly the comments that we'd be ready to finalize and present to the board before that public hearing.
What I'd like to do is ask the questions that we brought up last week to see if they've been addressed, last month, is that fine?
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, we're going to go by the letter that Mr. Godioso introduced to us, there was like thirteen exhibits.
Sure, may, may I grab that letter from my phone?
Sure, go ahead, read the, read the whole file, it's not that much, you'll, you'll, we'll go over it quickly. Now, we'll go over them by number, as the way Mr. Godioso has them numbered.
What's the date of the letter you're referring to?
His letter is May twenty-third.
That's the letter.
Snyder and Snyder? Okay. All right, number one you have here was the special permit application form, okay? Now, in that form, what I asked him to do was, he has an address here, in that form he has an address of twenty-seven hundred Route nine, that's not twenty-seven hundred, twenty-seven hundred Route nine is the commercial building.
Correct.
So, Mr. Godioso said he was going to get a nine-one-one address, did he do that?
It's being applied for, the, the road name would be Vineyard Drive, we're proposing a number fifty, but we're still getting a, an approval for that.
Okay, you could have that next meeting. Next one, on the application, what I'd like to see is, it just says wireless communications tower, I want to see the height.
Correct.
Okay, so I'd like to see by next meeting, which would be September eleventh.
Yep.
Okay, that, a completed, new application.
Sure.
Okay, great. Now, number, let's see, what do we got here? Where's the word, I've lost myself, number two is.
No violations letter.
Yeah, that's fine, okay. Number three is a vesting deed property, that's good. Number four you got is FAA determination of fact of, of hazard, that's fine. Number five is a structural certificate, certificate letter, that's fine. Number six is your visual amendment with the view shed maps, that's okay. Number six is, number seven, radio frequency exposure report. Let's see. That was from Pinnacle Telecom Group, prepared that, correct?
Yep.
Okay, and in the page, let's see. On page ten, you talk about distances, five hundred feet, he talks about the health hazards, maybe after five hundred feet, there's no health hazards, well, we discovered actually that there is a house that's three-seventy-five, there's a home that's three-hundred-and-seventy-five feet, I'll show you that later on.
Okay, sir, I, I believe.
So, we need, what we need is a report, what are, what are the health hazards to that home, at three-seventy-five, what are the health hazards under five hundred feet, okay? And also, I think there's, there's something in there about the address. Let's see, number seven, let me see. We have an address that the closest house is seven-hundred-and-fifty feet away, okay? And by your own survey, it's not, the closest house is three-seventy-five.
That correction will be made.
Right, so, I want a whole complete new report, I don't want, just, you know, give me, have a change, just made the whole report, I want to report, you know, to state, like I said, the dangers of the health hazard, and the fact that the house, actually house is, you know, three-seventy-five, or whatever, you know, you come to the exact measurement on it.
The accurate measurements.
Okay. Let's see. Oh, number eight is your, your state environmental quality review, I'm not going to go over it, but on the second page, there's a question about description of existing visual environment. Now, you go down, it says, it says, within a quarter mile, within a mile, you got suburban residential, there's no box checked, so there is suburban residential with there, quarter mile, so that would have to be checked. And go down to, you have one here about, is there a river, a lake, or pond, there's no box checked, there is the pond, you got a pond on both sides, okay. I go down to question number six, exposure, the annual number of viewers likely to observe their post-project annually is five hundred. Now, this is going to be, is going to be seen in Route nine and Route three oh one, so, at any given hour, it could be five hundred. So, it's going to have to be a lot of zeros added onto that.
Okay.
All I'm looking for is, last month, there's a lot of mistakes in these things, okay? So, I'd want, I'd like you, homeland, and sit down with all your consultants to go over these things.
That is the plan, and we are actually going over those comments right now, we just have a little bit.
I did this last month, and you have nothing ready for me tonight, so what I'm doing, I'm hoping to do is, like you're saying, a public hearing in September, ain't going to happen, okay? Public hearing, September eleventh is going to be to see if you get all this stuff corrected.
That was what we were requesting.
Okay, there'll be no public hearing, no, no, okay.
Could the public hearing be contingent on making these?
No, we're going to get this straight first.
Sure.
Okay. Number nine is got your environmental assessment form, we're not going to go over that now, it's a lengthy form, we won't go over that right now, okay. Number ten, you got is Saratoga's visual resource assessment, okay? Okay, I'm sorry, in there, it is the one where you have seven-hundred-and-fifty feet. On page one, under landscape setting, it says the tower site is approximately two-thousand-and-fifty feet northeast of US Route nine, and a one-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy feet southwest of Route three oh one. The nearest residential structure is approximately seven-hundred-and-sixty feet northeast of tower site on Rock Wall Road. Well, we know that's not correct, because your own survey, which your attorney last month agreed with me, is only three-seventy-five, so that report has to be done over, or corrected.
Again, sir, we were aware of these comments, I just apologize, it's not ready for the board tonight.
What I try to do, in all honesty, as being a chairman in this board, is we look at, we try to treat every applicant fairly, okay, and try to make sure that the application can proceed as timely as possible, but in order to do that, I got to have your help.
Absolutely, understood.
Okay. Also in there, there's these simulated towers, I spoke to Saratoga about this, and the simulated towers, the pictures they give, they only give one set of.
The renderings.
Renderings on top, okay, you're going to have four companies here, so I'd like to see, actually, want to see what it's going to look like, okay, so they have to do.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
The pictures over again. Okay. Yes.
Also, the simulated towers only show the view from Route 9 and Vineyard Road. It doesn't show the view from the residential areas, you know, from Round Tree?
Yeah, I think, I think, when we had the balloon test, I think the gentleman from Saratoga was there, was taking pictures of the balloon test. So, I, probably what we do is the same company. So, I don't know the fellow's name.
It was Matt Allen.
Matt, okay. I spoke with him, and I said, if we could line up, you know, residential houses too with photos of, and he did take photos from Mr. Gord's home at 60 Round Hill. He took photos.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'd like to see, you know, what the simulated thing would look like from there.
I believe those are being prepared, but absolutely.
Okay. No problem. But, you know, this is stuff we have to have, you know, so you're talking public hearings. We're not aware of public hearings. Uh, let's see. What else we got? We got that, we got that, we got there. Okay. I guess what, one of the things that we wanted, I guess is not ready yet, is the survey on exactly the need, you know, show the need, the need that you need, that this is needed, I guess.
Absolutely.
I don't know how else to say it, you know. I mean, 'cause I always have, my cellphone works in there, so I, I just would want to see from your company, so we can have our RF guy look at it and see if it matches.
I believe an updated RF report is being prepared to address those comments.
And you'll have that for September.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay. Now, let me explain to you about September, okay? September 11th, we have our meeting. Do not give any information that night because it'll be useless. It'll be another month, okay? So, our secretary mails it out to us about 10 days before, at least, okay? So, you're gonna have it, you're gonna have it to the secretary in the town at least 10 days before.
Absolutely. We'll make sure to do it before that.
So, when she mails us the package, we have time to look it over. Because stuff that's handed me that night, I can't do anything with it.
Absolutely understood.
You understand that? Okay. Now, you got a wetlands permit. I know you're, be front of the wetlands.
Front of the Conservation Board, correct.
Okay. You have a meeting with them tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night. And that would be the goal, if we were to set a public hearing, it would be a joint public hearing with the Conservation Board.
Correct.
Yes.
Well, we would, we would like any input from the Conservation Board, too. I already spoke to several members like that, so we work on the same-
Correct.
Point. Okay. Now, on your site plan, on page four, you show us the site with buildings. So, I think it's 5700 square feet. Yeah, page number, I think it's page number four. Page number four. It's gonna be, I guess, 5,600 square feet disturbed. I guess that's what you're gonna make the concrete pad.
Correct.
You show four buildings, okay? Well, actually, four buildings and, actually, five buildings. No, I think, but there's 10 by 10 as a platform. But you show four buildings, size anywhere between 12 by 20 to 12 by 20. Two buildings have the measurements in them. The other two do not. You understand, you see what I'm looking at?
I can address that.
Sure.
My name's Vincent Xavier. I'm the regional manager for Homeland Towers. Just one point of clarification, you had said that the pad was going to be 56?
Is that, is that correct? No?
There's not a concrete pad that holds size. It's gonna be a gravel.
Oh, no concrete. It's gonna be gravel?
No. All the concrete for the tower is subsurface.
Okay.
The reason you see the two different indications there is that Verizon spec, which we know what it is now because they're the co-applicant, would call for an elevated steel platform on four piers. The four piers are the circles you see. So, that's how you get the dimensions of 11.5 by 20. The other three are proposed standard typical size of their layout. So, all the other ones are the same size as the one that's shown as 12 by 20, but it only shows one. But the application now is for the tower and the one carrier.
So, these buildings ought to contain equipment?
Well, the 11.5 by 20 is actually not gonna be a building. It's gonna be a steel platform with outdoor equipment on top. The other carriers may use a shelter or a building, and in that building would be their equipment.
Okay. Now, while you got the map, go back to the page before. I think it's page four. Page three? No. Back again. Page, sorry, I missed it. Page two.
Can I have a question?
Yeah, sure.
In addition to the equipment that are, that is gonna be located in these buildings, what else is gonna be in there?
Besides equipment? Nothing. It would just be telecommunications equipment in the building, which would consist of radio racks, potentially a backup battery source. But maybe I'm not fully understanding the question. Besides radio telecommunications equipment, there's nothing else in the shelters.
Okay.
They're not designed to the couch or anything like that. No.
They do have generators.
Right now, the proposal for this one would be like an outdoor generator on the steel platform. Oftentimes, the generator itself wouldn't be in the shelter, depending on what type it is. I think it's an issue of fumes. I'd have to have the engineer confirm. But generally speaking, if another carrier came in, they would have a generator on the outside of the shelter, most likely.
And what, and what fuel those generators?
Well, it would depend. There's several different sources. If there's no natural gas available, it would be either propane or diesel. But this application itself, we don't know what those future carriers' requirements are gonna be. Post Sandy, a lot of the requirements changed, and they try to use whatever fuel source they can, which taking into account environmental concerns. So, we won't know that until the future applicant comes in. And once that application for a co-location does occur, they're gonna have to go back before the boards and seek separate approval.
Generators produce emissions if they're propane or natural gas.
Well, a combustion engine, yeah, would produce, yeah, yeah.
Toxic emissions.
Page, page two.
How much fuel do you typically have stored with the generator?
I'd have, it all depends on the generator. I couldn't give you those specs right now as far as the diesel size, but it could, it could likely be propane. I would have to get back to you with the, you wanna know the quantity of the fuel and how long the supply would run for?
Yeah. So, being in a valley with a generator, I guess there would be a noise to it.
We can provide noise studies, but these things don't run all the time. They would run in an emergency situation.
Right.
And if, you know, if we have a hurricane like Sandy, you wouldn't want the generator run so that people would have communications.
I live in Phillips Town. I have central power. It goes out every week. It goes out about a couple hours a week. So, have a lot of fuel in your generator, is all I can tell you. All right. Now, page number two. Are you leasing the 64 acres completely?
No.
No. Why are you leasing?
We're leasing the, just access to, and, you know, page ZD3 really shows it a little bit clearer. The rectangle, that's the bold rectangle here, and just an even for access to it. Our space, lease spaces wholly contained within the fenced compound area.
Okay. So, that's all you're leasing?
Yes.
Okay. So, it means you can't move it on the 64 acres?
No.
I asked you to go another site on the 64 acres, like further down towards the commercial area or something like that. You don't have that?
I don't have those rights right now.
So, let me ask you a question. So, this part of this is residential, so I guess there still could be houses built there?
Sure.
Around the, around the-
Yeah. Well, it's actually not a residentially zoned property.
All right.
It's commercial, but-
So, so there's no alternative site? On that location, that's it?
Correct.
Okay. Now, in your package, you gave me, they gave me a letter from the town board. It was 2015, I believe. And it speaks to, I guess, the attorney. It speaks to, I guess you had a couple of town, meetings with town board, that you're gonna put this at 59 Lanagate Road?
Several years back, and I was involved with that as well. I did approach the town, even though it was not in the more favorable zone compared to our current application, to discuss potentially using the landfill as a sighting opportunity, and that was rejected.
Okay. The board naturally has to look at different things, like alternative sites, you know, a lot of people have complaints in the area or something like that.
Yeah.
So, would that be an alternative site?
Well, when I first approached them, I didn't do it knowing the RF need of the area. Just land use, looking around. I wanted to see what options existed.
Right.
We did recently meet with the town supervisor. We are, and one of the reasons we're not fully prepared with all of the documentation to complete our application today was, we just had that meeting with them about weeks ago.
What we got a meeting about?
About alternate uses and to rehash our discussion regarding the Lanagate Road property and alternatives. So, we are gonna be reevaluating that, and part of it is having the RF report and our RF engineer or subcontractor that we assign to reevaluate that property as well.
Okay. Yeah, I'll tell you, in looking at this, I looked at, I know the Lanagate. I know that it's a town landfill and everything else like that.
Yep.
It, you wouldn't need a, you wouldn't need a wetlands permit, right?
Well, even in this instance, the wetlands permit really is just for access next to a wetland.
You still gotta go before the board to get it.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you wouldn't really be cutting that many trees down, I don't think.
Uh, well, it would depend where it would go.
Right. Yeah. And the town would get the income, right?
They would if we were to lease on their property.
Okay.
But right now, I can't assert that the site actually works from an RF perspective. We're currently still evaluating that.
Well, could you look at that and evaluate that?
We are. We are. We expect to have that answer before-
By September 11th, to see if that could be an alternative site.
Correct.
I mean, I don't know whether the town could go along with it, but I would just like to know if that's an alternative site.
No, we are, we are evaluating that, absolutely, and we expect to have that answer prior to the next meeting.
Okay, great.
Yep.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Is that the only other alternative site you're looking at?
Well, we had originally looked at alternative sites, but that is the only one we're relooking at at this time.
Okay. All right. Let me speak to the attorney a second.
Sure.
There's a couple of things you got, you're gonna need to be in compliance. You got agreement on removal and repair.
Yep.
Okay. You're gonna need agreement of proof of insurance?
Yes, sir.
All right. Now, the agreement of removal and repair has to be that the owners, the tower owner leasing and his successors, an interest to the town. You could pretty much have your guys speak to Ron Gaynor, okay? Our town engineer is what you're gonna need exactly on that.
Absolutely.
There's a few things you're gonna need. I'd like to have some information out by the next meeting.
We'll have that for you.
The three things would be the agreement, the proof of insurance, and financial security. I guess, I know you have somebody dealing with Ron, who's our town-
Absolutely.
-engineer, and then they can get together and, you know, and he'll tell them exactly the things that are needed.
We'll make that happen.
And I know this has to be, according to town law, it has to be a meeting between, co-meeting between the, our board and the Conservation Board, public hearing. But we're not ready for that now.
Understood.
You don't even have corrected what they asked to be corrected last month. I'm not chastising them. I'm just trying to say-
Understood.
I'm here to help you, make sure it goes quickly, but you gotta help me.
I understand, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Now, this is not a public hearing. And you've all been very patient. Thank you.
Can I ask one more thing?
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
As part of this application, there'll be an environmental review. Can we get your ability to designate yourselves or your intent to be lead agency for that environmental review under SEACRA?
I want to speak to Mr. God, about that. How should we go about that? The best way?
As entirely possible. The intent of the environmental regulations, according to the state, is to initiate, initiate the environmental review as early in the application process as possible. So, I've chatted with your attorney, and we're both in agreement that that's an appropriate thing to initiate. We have identified one other board that's an involved agency. That would be the Conservation Board. The only proviso I would have, or condition I'd have on declaring your intent to be lead agency is that you wouldn't initiate that circulation to other agencies until you get the corrected environmental documents that you've referred to. So, any corrections necessary to the EAF or the other environmental documents that are in that application, they should be filed in a corrected form, and then we can assist the secretary to do the circulation with the Conservation Board.
Okay. So, probably that would have to be done the next meeting.
Well, you can condition, you can conditionally act to initiate that, declare your intent conditioned upon receipt of the corrected EAF materials.
Okay.
And then, we would work with the secretary to get those corrected documents issued and the lead agency circulation started.
Well, I think the board, does the board agree that we should be the lead agency in this one, or?
I think so.
I agree.
Agree? All right. Well, let's, let's work towards that. We'll make the intent that we'll be-
The motion would be to declare your intent to be lead agency pursuant to SEACRA and initiate that process conditioned upon receipt of the environmental documents.
Okay.
I make a motion to declare us lead agency in relation to SEACRA.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. All right. Now, as I said, it's not a public hearing, but there's a lot of people here. And I'm sure you've got, you're all, I know you all have a lot of interest in this and concern. So, what I'm gonna do is gonna give everybody a couple of minutes to speak on it. But I want to tell you one thing first. We got, we just got handed these a couple of hours ago, okay? They're letters from people concerned in the area. I guess what this would be, the attorney, Mr. Kenny, these are letters. I'll just let you know. These are letters. You got them?
Yeah.
Okay, good. As long as you got it. Right. There's, I count roughly 55 or something, somewhere between there. Okay, I'm not, I don't know for sure how many there are, but that's it. There's about 55. These are from letters from people in the area, who live around the area, who have concerns. So, we don't have time to read them tonight, okay? But we don't have a meeting till September, so this'll get everybody on a board summer reading, on the beach. They'll be sitting, I'm sure they'll be on the beach sitting there reading these letters. Okay. Now, let me, let's speak a little bit to the balloon test. We got a balloon test, let's see, when was that? Tuesday, June 27th. That was conducted between 8:00 AM and noon. We had a couple of days. It was canceled because of the wind and whatnot. They tried to get the best day to wind. That didn't work out too well, okay? Because the balloon kept going down with the wind. But Homeland Towers did a great job of trying to keep it, and they did, you know. There was times that we were able to see the actual true height of it, you know. In fact, I know one time we had a problem and Ron went down about 10:30 or so, and we tied two balloons together, you know, which gave us a better. But I now understand with the wind conditions and the fact it was caught in the trees and all like that. But it did cooperate, and the test was completed. Ron, you're gonna give me some kind of report, I guess, maybe about the balloon test, or maybe you could speak to it?
The applicant, as part of that balloon test, we went through a great number of areas throughout the, that area of town. And they took photographs of the balloon in place, and they're gonna replicate the, the environmental assessment that they did, the photo simulations that represented the tower that you've already seen. They'll recreate those again with the actual photographs of the balloon testing. So, you'll have some comparison. That'll all be in the subsequent documents to be filed.
Okay.
I wanted to say, I would like to see the photographs of the, of the proposed tower. You know, they're gonna, I guess, Photoshop it in.
Right.
But I'd also like to see the equipment pads or whatever you call it.
At the base? Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to see the base in the, in the, because that's gonna be part of the view.
Yeah, we'll make sure that's done.
Okay. Thank you. Like I said, the test went between 8:00 and 12:00, and Mr. Gaynor was there, and there was, Homeland Towers were there. They cooperated. And the gentleman from Saratoga was there, I believe.
Can I speak to that one point for the view shed? If these visual analysis are done so that they'll only be seeing what can actually be seen from the views, a lot of the times, the actual equipment base will be below a tree line or below a screening, so it wouldn't be there as part of a natural view. We can make renderings so that, part of the plans, but it might not be part of the view shed if the photo during the balloon test wasn't able to see that.
Right. Well, it wouldn't be part of the view from Route 9, but I think it would be part of the view from the residential areas on Round Hill Road.
We'll, we'll make sure that the, the views that are shown, they're are detailed, and that would be accurate.
During, during the test, there was, the board members were able to observe it, and there was a couple of people, a couple of members of the Conservation Board that were there I spoke with. A lot of time I looked at was at 60 Round Hill Road, Mr. Gordak's home. I observed the balloon from there, and I spoke to a number of different people. Personal, what I observed from 60 Round Hill Road was that the balloon is visible above the tree lines, which would be the tower. It would be visible above the tree lines. But there again, Ron at deck's that seasonal, so what I did was go inside. Went inside, went to the living room, and to his kitchen and dining room and all. And it's, the back of his house, the back of his house is glass, two stories of glass. So, I sat down in the living room. Yes, you could see, you'll be able to see this tower above the tree line, okay? And that was my personal observation, and in the wintertime, it would be more obvious. Now, while I was there, I met, spoke with Mrs. Jordan of 24 Rock Lane. She's over here, right? She asked that myself and Ron Gaynor go to her house so she could express her concerns, which we did. And also, Mr., the gentleman from Saratoga went there with us, and he took some photos, okay? While I was there, I met a Mrs. DeLeo of 10 White Rock Lane. She's here too. Oh, he's here too, okay? And she told me her concerns, okay? So, they're here, so I'm gonna let them speak a little bit for themselves. Now, I'm gonna open up to the public, but I'm gonna ask you, there's a lot of people here, and like I say, we're nowhere near a public hearing at this time. But I understand your concerns, and, so I want, anybody get up and stop and give us a few minutes, okay? Don't make it too lengthy because you will have time at the public hearing. I'm gonna ask Mr. Gordak, because you were, you were there to speak. You would like to, and for, you're gonna have to give your name and address. Maybe write it down, if you could write it down.
Write it down.[1789.73]
Write it down.
Okay. So our secretary has it. And I ask everybody to be a little patient, everybody take this, you know, a few minutes.
Can you turn the microphone off?
I don't have, I'm not in control of the microphone. Could you turn it up?
Hold it my closer.
Okay. Is that better?
Oh, yeah.
Is that better? I can't go any closer than that. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Roger Gorovic, I live 60 Round Hill Road. You know, there's so many facets to this thing, it's hard to get a hold of. So if we just stick to aesthetics for the purpose of this discussion, when we look, obviously, out our view now, which is wonderful, just from the balloon, which we're almost of the opinion we should have another balloon test. And the reason was that during the course, it got caught on the trees, I went and pulled the thing off the trees. We have pictures of it at 45-degree angles, there were some of the Conservation Board people were there, they were looking, they were saying it's 60 degrees, and they know more about angles than I do, okay? All I know is that this thing, on the basis of what we see, would probably be 40 to 50 feet above our tree line. So what we're gonna see now is not just one antenna up there, there's gonna be four antennas up there. So we're gonna have this mass on top. One of the things that we talk about, and again, I'm supposed to stick to aesthetics tonight because that's where we wanna focus, there's so many different facets between, which was brought up already about emissions and gas emissions, frequencies, et cetera. We're obviously within 500 feet, but we're not the closest person. There are more people who are even closer. All the people on Rock Wall who are here in...
Not all of them.
Huh? Not all of them, but some of them on Rock Wall. Eldridges are closer than we are.
Right.
And that hasn't been indicated, and that's not part of the plan either. So as you've gone through and you've pointed out, all the mistakes, it is obviously a great concern to us. We would like to see, in hindsight now, another balloon test done, that this thing gets delayed until the leaves have gone a little bit further, so that we can actually visually see this mass of steel that's gonna be put up there. This is a whole different story. I mean, it was bad enough looking at the balloon as it was, and you were there, Mr. De... So, you know.
I told you my opinion.
So were you, Mr. Limb, so...
I told you my opinion.
The fact is, you know, you go and look at this, and this is not indicative of what we're all gonna see. And that's true from Route 9, that's true from White Rock, that's true from Rock Wall. There's a lot of things going on here which seem to...
From Langate.
From Langate. I mean, there's a lot of things that people are obviously gonna see, which is going to ruin what we've all fought for up here and what we've all worked for. And that's why most of us moved up here, that's why the people wrote their letters. We don't wanna see this destroyed. We don't wanna see tourism stopped because people are gonna see big steel structures. They can stay in New York and do that, they don't need to come up here. And we're gonna ruin our businesses, we're gonna take this to another level. And this is a very, very dangerous situation. I have great faith in the zoning board, I have great faith in the Conservation Board, and that our town will do the right thing. Because I think you're all very careful about what you do, nobody wants to just agree, nobody's gonna give a cob lunch for anybody for what they wanna do. But I think we have to be super careful in how we go forward here.
Thank you very much.
So...
I'm gonna ask Mrs. Jordan, I'm gonna ask Mr. and Mrs. Jordan, or, only because I spoke to you, or Mr. Delaio, or Mr. Delaio, either one. Nobody wants to talk. Mrs. Jordan.
Yeah.
And then I'm gonna open it up. It was only because I spoke to these ladies when I was there.
I'll speak and then sign, or do you want me to...
Just let me think and give me your name.
My name's Carrie Jordan, I live on 24 White Rocks Lane. I feel the same way Roger does, there were things left out on the application, one being our street wasn't even on, or there was no pictures taken from our area.
Your area is White Lock Lane?
White Rocks Lane.
Correct.
So the tower will be, the proposed tower will be over our house. So my whole backyard is nothing but windows, we moved up here to get away from the city, and so we built our home, all windows, and we look at this beautiful mountain valley, it's just spectacular. And the balloon test, I'd really like it if they can do it again, because I think, I've had friends that, the date kept getting changed, it got changed twice, so people really didn't know when it was happening. So I had friends that live all throughout town going, "When is it? When, I don't even, what are you talking about?" So a lot of people in the community didn't get the opportunity to go out of their homes and actually look up at this test. I drove around, and I noticed the balloon was just all over the place. So if we can do another test, maybe even with a bigger balloon this time, I mean, that balloon was fairly small, to get an idea.
I think one of your concerns too, I think, was that during the winter, you would be able to see the...
I'd see the structure itself, yes.
Buildings more than the tower itself, because you're below the tower.
Right. I'd be looking at the tower, but the whole entire tower.
So you're looking at the building, your concern was looking at the buildings, the structures and everything.
Yeah, I'm gonna see the whole entire structure going up.
Right. You wouldn't see it in the summer, but it would probably be in the winter.
We'll see it, from what I was told by the gentleman that was there taking photos, that we'll see it above the one tree line.
Okay.
During the summer. And then the other issue we had is that we have a stream that goes behind our home and around our house, so if they start messing around with the pond up there and start...
No, you're concerned about the water coming down.
The water coming down into our home.
On your home, you're concerned about the water coming down to your house.
Exactly.
If they change the... I don't think they're gonna change the water way, but, you know, I understand where your concerns.
So if they start, I know they said they were putting drainage in, so if that somehow gets into our stream, we could have water into our basements and also our road, so...
Well, Homeland Towers is taking notes on this, and I'm gonna ask them to give us some kind of an answer on the next meeting, which is, give them two months, they'll give them time to look at these things.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I'm Priscilla Eldridge, I live on Rock Wall Road, I'll sign in.
Yeah. Just wait, your secretary has just, we have the record.
Unlike my good neighbors, I was not aware of the balloon test. I had read in the current that one was going to be held, but the dates and the wind had changed it. I live on 100 Rock Wall Road, which is very close to where the tower is going to be built. I think we, our property line is about 70 yards from the tower. But I was in my home, and my home is solar, big windows like everyone else to enjoy the trees, four big windows, solar panels, everything facing south, and I was walking downstairs looking at my hummingbird feeders, and I see these enormous balloons straight out off my deck. In my letter to the board, I included a, I grabbed my camera, I was not aware of anybody taking pictures, obviously. I didn't see any photographs of the balloon test from...
They haven't come to us yet either.
Right, and I didn't see anybody on my property or on the road at the time taking photographs, and they could've had a wonderful view from any point. I could see it from my bedrooms, my living rooms, the downstairs bedrooms, the dining room, the kitchen, the entire house.
Your address is what, I'm sorry?
100 Rock Wall.
Did you take any photographs?
I did, and it's included in your packet.
Okay.
I took four, and as I could see, the balloon's going up and down and going left and right, but the last one shows the balloon, and it's way above the tree line. Now, I have a little Sony camera, so it looks like it's 100 miles away, it's about 700 feet from my deck.
Right. No, I could, I, this is from your...
From my deck.
From your deck.
And the, that's black and white, but it's a pretty, pretty red balloon.
That's when the two balloons were together.
Yes, and I noticed them moving and such, but since there were no balloon photographs, I can't understand how they're gonna be able to show me when the tree leaves are down, what this whole tower is gonna look like. I can see it way easily now.
Right.
But I don't think their photographs are going to be indicative of the impact on the Rock Wall neighborhood. Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Gentlemen over there. I'll do signage first, and then you can, that'd be easiest, I guess, your names, so
My name is Steve Sterling, I live on 125 Langate Road. I wanna leave you with three questions, so I'll try to be brief.
Sure.
I was actually here, I guess it was two years ago, when this was really...
59 Langate, at the town landfill.
Right. And I actually, my property is up against the landfill on the other side of it.
So you don't want it that side of the street?
What's that?
You don't want it on that side of the street, right?
Well, you know what, I don't have good cell service where I am, so, but, you know what, it doesn't bother me, and I work around it. I have one place in my house and one place on my terrace I can get good cell service, so people laugh at me, and I say, "You know, I don't have a good cell service, how can I call you on my landline?" And I'm happy to suffer through that. And I come up Route 9, I live and work off my phone, so coming up through Route 9, I lose my cell service, and people that know me well know that. That said, I wanna first off thank you for running these gentlemen through their paces, this is what we really count on, and the fact that you are all being the gatekeepers is really reassuring. The questions that I have are, what other places were suitable for this? Every single one of them. We know, the last time we heard, it was important for emergency services, we all know that's important, we know New York State is really coming down, they want everybody to be connected. Fine. You guys are the gatekeepers for what our whole Phillips Town area is going to look like, and this is a legacy decision, because we're all gonna look at this. And thank you for making the point that it's not 500 people, it's 500 people an hour on Route 9, driving through Phillips Town going, "Oh, my God."
Right.
And it's a real blight. I happen to have the experience of my brother who leased a piece of his property for a cell tower, his neighbors hate him. And in the fine print, it turned out that he didn't have any control of it, and they added a tier to it, they kept adding to it and adding to it and adding to it, he had no control. And the end of the day, one of the guys said, "Listen, you're never gonna have enough money to fight us about it." So he couldn't even take up the legal pursuit. So one of the questions I'd be curious about, and I know it's outside of the scope of aesthetics, is if you look at the one-year, three-year, five-year business plan that these guys will eventually build this out to, it is gonna be substantial. And their job isn't to fulfill the minimum requirement that may be satisfactory to a lot of people here, their job is to build the biggest possible facility they can possibly get away with in order to make the most amount of money over the longest period of time possible. So I get the sense that you're mindful of this. This poor gentleman here has to step in on short notice, and you basically pointed out a ton of things that they hadn't prepared for, and it does come off a bit of, the less questions they can answer, the quicker they can move this along, the better they will be. And I'm happy to see that you know that will not serve us all well.
It's not gonna move quickly, it's not gonna move to this board until we know we have all the information that we need.
And thank you for that. And so my lasting question is, if we could all look at all of the possibilities in this area where something like this could go, and what is the minimum requirement that would satisfy what's really trying to be accomplished here, not what the $25 million potential is? I think that would be a better reference for what we're trying to look at, because in the end of the day, you're never gonna take this away, never. And the last question I had, which again is not an aesthetic one, but what I've learned through two processes is, the amount of heat that starts coming off these things when they keep building up and adding to them is really substantial. In my brother's case, the trees around his whole area were browning because of the amount of heat that was getting thrown off, all these buildings and all the things that they're doing. So I guess I wanna be a little mindful, I don't wanna say too much, because obviously, these good gentlemen here has gotta go back to their bosses and say, "Hey, we better be prepared to answer this and work with that." But I'm more confident that I was, that with the vigilance here, and also with the conservation folks, that everybody's very mindful that we're never gonna take away what this does to our community. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Just sign in if you would, please. And I want to remind everyone too, these, that's what these hearings are for, this is not a public hearing, but we bend the rules a little bit, you know? But you have to go to these meetings to give your concern, like Conservation Board or this meeting like that, because that's the only way we know. You know, if nobody shows up, nobody says these things, and, you know, you have to protect yourselves, I guess it's, yes, sir.
My name is Paul Eldridge, and I'm the worst half of that lady that spoke earlier. If you stood on our deck, looking out to our front yard, it is dead center in front of us, the proposed location. If I was to stand on the ground in our front yard, we are at about 740-foot elevation. The proposed tower, as I understand it, is somewhere around 680, 700. So literally, if I stood on my front yard and I looked at it, it's gonna be 120 to 140 feet above me. If you come up Rock Wall Road, our property is sort of at the last turn. When you make that turn, or as you approach that turn from lower level, it will be looming over you. So all of our neighbors on Rock Wall Road will see this every day coming and going. I took some measurements, there's a stake that says the center point of the tower. The center point of the tower, with, I used a 300-foot measuring tape, our property line is 212 feet away, or 70 yards, as Priscilla mentioned. If you look at where the fence is, the fence is 170 feet from our property line. CF Diversified has 64 acres. They couldn't have gotten any closer to our property unless they put it on our property, it is that close. As Priscilla mentioned, every room that you look from, living room, kitchen, all the bedrooms, it will be there. The balloon test clearly shows it's dead center. This is in the summertime, when there's lots of trees, but it is way above the tree line, even using a setback and an angle, it still looms over us. It is aesthetically, it would ruin our property from my perspective and our perspective. If you look at the area where this is proposed, it's not far from one of the retention ponds that was placed there when they put in Vineyard Road and I guess eventually Round Hill. There's two ponds. The access road going in, I believe, is supposed to be 12-foot wide, it's gonna come off Vineyard Road, and it's gonna go right by the pond, and it's gonna go to the fenced area, and then you'll have the 5610 or whatever it is square feet. In the summertime, we will clearly see probably the top half. In the wintertime, I think we'll see the whole thing. Our property goes down, obviously, we're at 740, this is somewhere between 680 and 700, so we will look down towards it, and we'll look up at it when it's completed. It's incomprehensible to me that there's 64 acres and that's where it's put. However, I do know that, I think it was said earlier, that this supposedly is about the only place or the best place, whatever, that they can put it.
Well, we've asked them, and they're gonna, and I have confidence that they're gonna look at alternative sites. Now, by alternative sites, I mean, you know, Langate Road, that's possible, okay?
Yeah.
What, on this 64 acres, could it be possible moving closer down to, let's say, Route 9, to more commercial area? That's something I'm sure they're going to look at, okay? So, and that'll be for the next meeting, September 11th, they're gonna give us a report of They're gonna give us a report of what alternative sites they looked at, what other possibilities there may be.
I would think too, that whatever the structure is at the bottom would have to be fairly substantial to support 100... And is it 180-foot or 199?
180, 180 feet.
It is 180 feet?
Correct.
I would assume that that has to be fairly substantial to hold that.
Concrete.
What if it doesn't, and it falls down?
Well, this... I understand what you're saying, but as with any cell tower, there's gonna be insurances, there's gonna be bonds, and so on and so forth, so all that would be covered. Not that I want it to fall on your house, but I'm just trying to say that, you know, we make sure that all that is covered. So that's not an issue.
And I'll end with this. I've always looked at our piece of property as sort of a little piece of heaven in the middle of chaos. We bought this property in 1981, so we've owned it for 36 and a half years. We built the house and moved in in January of '83, so we've been in the house for 34 and a half years. We've... We love the spot. We love the area, we love our neighbors. We have a great community. Unfortunately, this will destroy that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes. I guess you could sign the pad, I know you... Take your time.
I feel for the Eldridges and for everybody who's... Who we already know is going to lose their view or gain a steel structure as part of their view. I'm really worried about the people who we don't know about, because if that test was done in the winter and there weren't the leaves on the trees, I am sure that there would be 20, 30 people whose views are going to be changed drastically. So I don't know if it's possible, but I really think that there should be a balloon test without leaves on the trees. It's very misleading this way. The other thing that I wanna say is about fire and the heat. The heat that comes off the cell tower, there are cell tower fires, they... Sometimes the cooling doesn't work, sometimes they catch fire from something else. There was a recent one where somebody was welding, one of the people servicing the tower was doing welding, tower caught fire. We're in the middle of a forest. If the conditions are right, if it's dry and windy and hot, and the cell tower is hot, and it catches fire, it's going to be a forest fire. There are at least four of us and two dogs who would not be able to get off the mountain.
Anyone else? Want to speak?
I just wanna say one more thing, if I can.
Yes. Don't crowd the microphone now, it's your second time up here, okay?
This is real simple, all right? You're looking for an alternate site? I'll give you an alternate site. I suggest you go back to Mr. Fadden and ask him to build the tower next to his house on top of the hill. In which case, he can put up 110... In which case, he can put up 110-foot tower, it doesn't have to be 200, because he'll be right on top of the mountain. He's only selling his house for 8.8 million, it clearly won't affect anything. So put it up there, leave the rest of us alone, and get on with your life. Thank you.
There's 26 acres up there, by the way, and it abuts Fonstock. They won't care, the animals won't say a word.
I appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and you've all been very patient, and then, believe me, I will go through these 55 letters, you know? I will do it tonight, but, you know, we will go through them, and as all board members will. We take this seriously, okay? I mean, nobody takes this as a joke up here, we all live here, okay? We live in the same... We live in the same town. The cell tower, they're gonna look at other alternatives, they're gonna look at... Maybe speak to Mr. Fadden, maybe it's possible that it could be moved closer down to Route 9? Yes. Maybe it could be closer... Come on over here, closer to Route 9. Maybe you could lower the tower. What I mean by that is, the only reason the tower's 180 is because you're gonna have four people on it. So the guy who's down at 120 is getting the same reception as the guy who's 180, correct?
We're reviewing all of those options.
Okay. I want all those options reviewed, and when you come back here September 11th, you know, I expect to have some kind of an answer. Or proposals, or something that we could look at.
We will.
Okay. Yes, sir.
That's all I was gonna say, is that we've heard all of the town's comments, and we've received the letters, we've heard the comments tonight.
I've cut 'em down, okay? You haven't heard 'em all. We'd be here till 1:00 in the morning if I wanted to hear 'em all.
We've received the letters, and we'll be attempting to address all of those comments as well as addressing the comments we've received from the board.
That's all we're asking for.
Just wanted to put that on.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. At this time, there's nothing else? I'd like to make a motion, adjourned?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.